Here.
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 Here. My first order of business tonight, acceptance of the minutes from October 10th, 2023. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes, revisions?
No.
Okay, I have a motion then to accept. The minutes is written?
I'll make a motion to accept.
You have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
So moved. Right, next order of business, public hearing. Appeal number 237805, area variance. Douglas Mann seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district where no accessory structure on one acre shall be more than 800 square feet in size. The applicant is proposing a 30 by 40 foot garage, 1,200 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 400 square feet. The property is located at 20 Woodmere Road on one acre and is identified as tax grid number 615804686447 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion, please, open public hearing?
Make a motion to open public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved. Mr. Mann?
Yes, sir.
For the board's benefit and anybody listening in, could you please give us a description of what you need and why you need it? Brief description.
Well, a brief description would be I'd like to get a 40-foot by 30-foot garage for my trailer. I have people knocking on my door all the time and people ask me what's in it because it's not your normal-looking trailer. So I had spoke to the gentleman that are here and it's up to you guys, you know what I mean? Decide there's nobody behind me, on the side of me, in front of me, but that's why I'm trying to apply for it.
I don't know if you guys are out on Saturday, take a look. I snuck in there this morning, take a look, see how to paint the footprint basically, paint it out.
And I put purposely my trailer in that box in case he did come so you could see.
Right. Could see that.
Did you have any elevations of what the new garage was going to look like?
No, sir. I called the company and they said they don't do that for some reason, that you would need a topo, something to measure the heights and property grades and all this stuff.
Topography.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I don't understand this stuff. And he also said the pitch of the roof that you had said to match the aesthetics of the roof on my house, they only make the buildings in a 12-3 pitch, which has over 145 mile an hour, you know, wind load and beats the snow load of the regulations that this county calls for.
Okay.
Gotcha. Do you guys have any other questions?
Mr. Mann, did you give any more consideration to building the breezeway between your house and the garage?
No, sir, I don't have that type of money to do a breezeway, which I don't understand when you guys explain to me, if I put a breezeway, I could put anything on my property because there's no laws against it. I mean, would my house look nicer the way it would be off to the side or should I put up a 40 by 100 because I would go to max? It would look stupid. I'm just trying, you know, it really would.
Well, it would, gentlemen, saying if there's a connection, right, between your existing residence and garage.
But in all honesty, I didn't know that until the fellows told me that.
Sure.
You know what I mean? But I just figured I could use the existing footprint that was there and just go five feet wide on each side and, you know, 20 feet up. That's all, that's all. And it's still over, I think it was 128 feet from the center line of the street. So it's actually recessed behind my house. I also had said if you guys, you know, proved it, that I would put up like pine trees, you know, skinny pine trees so it wouldn't look like it's sticking out like that. And then, you know, they said, we'll let you know Tuesday. But everybody was polite and, you know, understanding what I wanted to do.
You understood.
That's all I could say.
You understood.
But that's the main purpose. And then somebody had asked me for a floor plan to draw where my trailer would be and my two trucks. I actually put everything up to my existing footprint. It's still going to be tight, I have to pull the mirrors in because my trucks are 21 feet long, but you don't be able to put one on each side with the trailer in the middle.
Yeah, I saw that.
I tried to comply with everything that you guys asked for, you know what I mean? And that's it. I mean, whatever you guys say to build and how you want to build the code, that's fine with me. I'm not looking to do any shyster job.
It's 1,200 square foot in total. Any questions, you guys?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Any, any, any letters come in, be or do we have any?
There's actually four in there, it came back certified mail. I also got the letter that was printed in the newspaper with the certificate, the affidavit. Two I didn't get back yet and I have all the receipts in there to show when I mailed them out.
Nobody in, not in favor?
Actually, every neighbor approached me after they got it and I explained to them because they said, do I give you back the certified receipt? I said, here, you take that, I'll take this. I opened the letter for each person and I said, let me explain to you what I want to do. Everyone said, I don't care because it's next to the woods, to be honest with you. And then we did, you know, the side, it's supposed to be 20 feet from the side, we actually left a foot, you know what I mean, for in case, you know, I don't want to be over. So I got to put the plywood after, if the guys approve it for concrete work instead of saying you're over 20 feet.
You want to make sure that's right.
Right, absolutely. Because also I had said to the guys that if you do approve it, I will have the survey to come back and do exact measurements where the garage would stand.
Correct. Any other questions? No, guys.
Yeah, one of the thing I think is because like normally we allow up to 800 foot, you're asking for 1,200. So the variation you're asking is very large.
It's 33% bigger than what?
It is like 50%, right?
No, it's not 50% because if it's 800 square feet, it's actually 400 square feet, which would be a third.
It doesn't count that way.
It's not 50%.
Yeah, it doesn't count.
Be a third and a third and a third.
It doesn't calculate it that way. You calculate what is, what is total allowed and then how much over you're asking.
Okay.
Can I? I just want to make a comment. The law was changed that up until last year, it was 600 square feet, no matter where they were. Now it's been graduated, so it's 600 square feet for any properties under an acre. Between one and two acres, it can be 800 square feet. And I think two acres, you know, gradually goes up to 1,200. So he has an acre, so he's allowed by right 800. That's what he's talking about.
Yes.
Gotcha. Now, I assume you're requesting a variance of 400 square feet.
But actually, when they did the survey, it came out to 1.3 acres. You know what I mean? And then I realized that where they had the fence nailed to the trees, previous owners, my property actually went out like a slice of pizza. And that's why I was showing you guys, there's a market, there's one back there, and you had asked me where does it stop in this?
That's wondering, but the, the law reads one to two acres.
It's one to two, it doesn't matter what over one.
Make a difference. Okay. All right, any other questions, guys?
No.
No? Anybody in the audience have any questions concerned regarding this application? Okay. No other questions? Then can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close it.
Have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, can I then now have a motion to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood. There will be no substantial detriment located to nearby properties. There is no other feasible means available for you to pursue the benefit that you seek other than the requested variance. Your requested variance is substantial. The proposed variance will not have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. And the alleged difficulty is self-created.
All right then, can I have a second?
A second.
All right, roll call, please, be.
Mr. Dowell Court?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, no.
Did you say no?
No.
Oh, no.
Yes. Okay, so your variance has been granted.
Thank you.
If I vote to agree to it too.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
All right, next order of business tonight is appeal number 237806, area variance. Joseph F. Groter Jr.?
Yes.
Seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district where no accessory structure can be larger than 600 square feet in size or less than, on less than one acre. The applicant is proposing the legalization of a 12-foot by 19-foot, 228-square-foot rear shed addition to a legal 20 by 24, 480-square-foot pole barn, a total of 708 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 108 square feet. The property is located at 62 Degarmel Hills Road on .57 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625802773909 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Joseph?
Yes, sir.
For the board and anybody listening in, the audience, just a quick explanation of what you need and why you need it.
I need a variance for 108 square feet of a shed that I had built some time ago. It comes over 108 square feet, bigger than a 600 square feet on the building.
Got it. Now, that is the, that is the very last structure on the road there, so to speak. Again, you guys were out Saturday, take a look at this. I snuck in there this morning, take a look. I mean, I see what you got there. Now, there's no setback, side yard setback issues on this at all, bother?
He has the 20 feet that he needs.
Gotcha. So now just looking at it, it looks pretty tight to that property line. The number of structures is okay as well?
He's allowed two, he has the carport and the pole barn with this addition, so that's the two. He wouldn't be able to put anything else on without another variance.
Gotcha.
And the carport and the garage are separated to the point where they're not one structure.
Right, so they count as the two.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, you guys?
This is for Mr. Groter, legalization of the shed that you already have up.
Yes.
Because you're actually planning on moving.
Correct.
Mr. Groter, have any of your neighbors ever complained to you about the size of your shed?
No.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? You know, questions or concerns, can I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right then, can I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant the variance? I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means. Not creating any undesirable change in neighborhood, it's actually set back quite a bit, you know, from, from the front side yards. Whether the request is substantial, I don't believe it is. Whether the request will have any physical adverse effects on environmental effects, I don't believe so. However, the difficulty is self-created. That all said, I still feel we should grant the applicant the variance. Have a second?
I'll second.
One favor? I'm sorry, roll call, please, be.
Yes.
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 Yes. Your variance has been granted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night. Yeah, have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, appeal number 237807, area variance. Nicholas Martucci, seeking an area variance section 24037 and 24031 of district regulations in an R40 zoning district where 1,200 square feet minimum-sized dwelling unit is required, the applicant can provide 536.5 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 663.5 square feet for the renovation and expansion of a structure. The property is located at 221 Stony Kill Road on 1.00 acres and is identified as tax grid number 615601037510 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion, please, open public hearing?
I make a motion?
Have a second?
Second.
I don't see Mr. Martucci.
No?
No.
Yeah.
I have a good idea.
Maybe we'll, we'll skip and come back to this one.
Maybe he'll come and move?
Yeah.
I thought we made it clear that he was supposed to come.
Yeah.
We don't have it.
We shouldn't even have to do that. No?
You can just, just move on and see if he shows up later.
Okay. All right, we'll jump to the next item on the agenda and come back to that application later. All right, next up on the agenda, appeal number 237808, area variance. Eric and Kelly Bender, seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R40 zoning district where 50 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 32 feet for the construction of a six-foot by 21-foot extension of front steps, including landing and additional stairs, thus requesting a variance of 18 feet. The property is located at 18 Vondrin Drive on 1.18 acres and is identified as tax grid number 635701040897 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion, please, to open public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Name and address, please?
Eric Bender, 18 Vondrin Drive.
All right, Eric, for the board's benefit, anybody else listening in, just give us a brief description of what you need, why you need it.
I'm trying to stretch the stairs out to like a landing, two steps, a landing, two steps, and down to the, that concrete pad that you saw, just to dress it up a little bit and make it a little bit easier for my parents who, you know, need a little extra inertia to get up there. The existing steps, the, you know, the surfacing, they're like kind of semi-crumbling and...
Yeah.
Make it look a little bit easier. We wanted to bring, I don't know if you saw, where the car parks, when you walk down those two steps, you're like right into the door.
Yeah.
And so we want to just bring those steps, extend them down a little bit more so you can come out like behind the car and then walk up to it so you don't have to step in. It's, the way it's set up is just difficult for snow removal and it's just not wide enough. They wanted to take the first, the steps from the asphalt, there's like two or three steps, cut them off and do like a retaining wall. And just, you know, get some door swing room and make it look nice.
So the bottom portion was concrete and the top is concrete and then between it's going to be wood?
Yeah, I actually have a photo. If you were interested in looking, I could bring it up, of a house around the corner, something that we went off of.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Because we were trying to picture it.
Yeah. Okay. They have their last landing and stairs are wood and miners' net.
Yeah, I think we were just curious why it was just all concrete or?
Yeah, I wanted to do concrete, but I got vetoed from the real boss.
Just for the record, if he was doing it all in concrete, he wouldn't be here.
That's, that's...
Because that's landscape.
That was one of the reasons we're questioning it. Apparently, hardscaping is not...
Tell him, all right?
She's going to love it.
Look at the hassle she's made you.
But I see what you're doing.
Yeah. You can see what you're doing and why, why you're doing it.
Yeah, they, and when we, I did the measurements, the, the house itself is 50 feet on the button to the property line. So like the steps that are there are, you know, they're encroaching on it, but a grandfather type of situation.
The concrete that's by the door, is that going away or?
I might have to like chip it down a little bit. It hasn't moved, it's solid as a rock, it's just the surface is all crumbling. You know, they must have done a good job.
The measurement we're approving, is that to the first wood tread or is that to the bottom concrete pad?
It approves the whole thing.
Okay.
Because anywhere there's wood, he's kind of like encroached, so he's covered nine ways. But the fact that the steps themselves are encroached, like you said, as soon as you step outside the front door. So typically, they were all made with concrete steps years ago, which is hardscape. So when people want to turn them into decks or just front landings of wood, that's why they then require the variance.
So the, the concrete that I poured, the, the landing there, from the edge of that to the property line is the number?
Okay, so 18 feet is, is to the concrete, which doesn't technically count.
Yeah, but like I said, from, the whole thing is encroaching.
Yeah.
Got it.
I was going to move the house.
Yeah, we thought about moving the house.
But you won that argument?
Do you know where you're going to grow your cherry tomatoes?
Well, those were, there's like a swirl and they planted themselves and they did better than the stuff we put in the flower beds in our garden. And there's, and there's another spot behind the garden fence where they just, we, we get stuff like sunflowers and tomatoes that grow themselves and raspberries better than the ones we plant and cultivate in the, in the garden beds and...
Know the feeling.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions, you guys? No?
No.
Anybody in the audience here to speak regarding this variance? No? Okay, you have a motion then, please, to close the public hearing?
I make motion to close it?
Can I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right now, can I have a variance to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'd like a motion to grant the variance. Benefit can be achieved by, by no other means. It's not an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The request is verging on substantial, no adverse physical or environmental effect, and the difficulty is self-created.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, be.
Yes.
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 Yes. Your variance has been granted.
Thank you.
You all, sir.
Have a good night. Good luck.
Mr. Martucci is...
Mr. Martucci showed that to you.
I just said it.
So that was you?
I think we all said it.
I think I did. I think I got it, yeah. All right, so we're going to go back to appeal number 237807, area variance. Nicholas Martucci, seeking an area variance section 24037 and 24031 of district regulations in an R40 zoning district where 1,200 square feet minimum-sized dwelling unit is required, the applicant can provide 536.5 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 663.5 square feet for the renovation and expansion of a structure. The property is located at 221 Stony Kill Road on 1.0 acres and is identified as tax grid number 615601037510 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
We actually did. So it's Shaleesh and Tom.
Can we have a second?
Tom.
Okay. All right, good. Nicholas, correct?
Richard.
All right, so, so state your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Martucci, 221 Stony Kill Road.
Gotcha, okay, so for the board's benefit and anybody listening in, just could I have a brief description of what you need and why you need it?
There's an existing house on the one-acre lot that's surrounded by wetlands, so I cannot go outside the footprint of the house. And we want to renovate it to put a, a nice home there. And we can go more than, than 540 square feet if we need to. We can go up to 850 to 960 square feet added to 1,200 square feet.
Gotcha. Gotcha, so, I mean, you guys were out here on Saturday, I swung by this morning.
So it's not like the intent was to provide like 900, right? You had 300, 300, 300, that was kind of a...
Right.
Yeah.
So this is... So my, to my own benefit, I mean, the existing structure is staying.
Correct.
So it sounds like he's not physically allowed to build anywhere else on the site?
Yeah.
You have the footprint and you're going to build up?
Yes, sir.
On that footprint?
Yes.
You're going to add one story?
One story above the existing.
Above the existing.
And I can't go two because there's the 34-foot height restriction also.
Right.
I mean, pretty, I mean, have a lot of limitations here, right?
Yeah. Wetlands.
Yeah. Give me, you got wetland, you got some topo.
Do you have any pictures of what you expect it to look like or are you kind of like?
Yeah, we have a complete set of blueprints from registered architect.
You don't have any with you though? Nothing like that?
I don't have any to do with it right now. But also we have the approval from Department of Health for a septic tank and there was an existing septic tank there. There was existing electric there.
Yeah, I got it. I mean, you don't have a lot of...
I just want to see how it looks like. Correct.
See if you have elevation. This is just size.
Superspan, an open loft on the second floor. So a little bit less than the 900, right?
Yeah.
It's good.
Yeah, not much more.
So door is coming in front? We just start stacking here?
This is the front. Maybe the rear.
Right, it's the topo. Yeah. These drops off here, says the rear.
So, so the front has a ramp then also?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no issues with any setbacks that were, were with any of this?
So the house is pre-existing, but it was built as either a hunting cottage or just a very small cottage at the time, and then it remained empty. And it was built prior to the law that now all houses in any of the bigger zones have to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet.
But the, the ramp in the front and the deck at the back, there's no zoning issues?
No.
Hey, I have one question though. We were discussing the shed, I guess, that's cottage, that's way in the back there?
Yes, that's on the, half on one property and half on the other.
Yeah.
That's a legal issue he's going to have to settle. That is actually, we did a lot of research, belongs to the other lot, but it's about eight feet unto your property. So I don't know if you go far back, the two parcels might have belonged to a family where they didn't have a survey and they just built that cottage. The other parcel is actually listed as a two-family. So he'll either, I don't know what condition it's in, so A, he does have to come down or they have to do a lot line.
It's collapsing.
Something has to get done. This would be a problem when he goes to sell it for anyone buying it, they won't get a clean abstract.
It's nothing that we should worry about.
It has nothing to do with you, yeah, this is something his lawyer and has to deal with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions or issues regarding this application? No? All right, so I have a motion then, please, to close the public hearing?
To make a motion to close the public hearing?
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Could I have a motion then, please, to grant or deny the applicant a variance?
Make a motion to grant the variance. As we stated, this is a unique site condition. You have an existing building that's been, with a footprint that's grandfathered in. You cannot physically build a larger structure on the site. Benefit can be achieved by no other means. There's no undesirable change in the neighborhood. In fact, this would seem to be beneficial. Request is not substantial. There's no adverse physical or environmental effect. And it's debatable if the difficulty is self-created. I'd go with yes, it is self-created.
Second.
Have a second? All right, Cab, the roll call, please, B.
Yes.
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 Yes. Your variance has been granted.
Thank you very much.
Sure, good luck.
Good luck, sir.
All right. Next up on the agenda. Discussion. Appeal number seven-three-zero-nine, area variance, Sally Boyce, seeking an area variance section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R forty zoning district, where ten feet to the rear property line is required, the applicant can provide two feet for the legalization of an existing nine foot eight by nine foot five shed, thus requesting a variance of eight feet. Where twenty-five feet to the side right yard property line is required, the applicant can provide fifteen feet for the legalization of an existing carport, thus requesting a variance of ten feet. Where fifty feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide twenty-five feet for the legalization of an existing carport, thus requesting a variance of twenty-five feet. The property is located at ten Card Road on point three-five acres and is identified as tax grid number in the town of Wappinger. Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
Joe Boyce, ten Card Road, Wappinger, Baltimore.
Gotcha. So a brief description of what you need and why you need it?
I need a variance to, for a carport and a shed that's been there for fifteen years. And I now need a building permit form.
All right, so we have the legalization for a shed, right?
Carport.
Actually, two. I mean, two we're looking to do.
Yes, sir.
Card Road. Where is Card Road? Just curious.
Like right across from my garden.
Where?
Right across from my garden, right next to the inner city tire.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Road back there.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Did you build these structures?
No, well, the carport I put there. But when I came to the town a long time ago, they told me I didn't need a permit for it. And I guess I do now.
Oh, that was my next question. Who told you you don't need a permit?
I mean, whoever was in, you know, I don't know who was there back then.
Someone in the town.
Yeah, in that building, like where now you have the sliding glass. You didn't have that years ago, but you used to be able to walk in there. And whoever sat at that desk told me I didn't need it.
How long has it been there?
I'm sorry?
How long has it been there?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen?
Yep.
What's behind you, sir? I'm looking at some of your pictures and it looks like it's just an all wooded, big wooded lot. Is that-
I'm sorry?
Behind your house?
Oh, yeah, it's all woods behind.
Just all woods behind your-
Yeah, there's like six acres that goes up to inner city tire and all the way down between, you know, Card Road and Ballard House.
That's a very big shed or a very tiny car that you have.
You know, I was trying to fix it for my son, so he wanted, you know, to put all those boos in there. Honestly, that's why I did it. And I was redoing the shed and I guess the, I guess someone drove by and saw me working on it.
All right. Well, what we generally do, unless you guys have any more questions, is we schedule a site visit to the property. We usually do that the Saturday before the next zoning board meeting.
Okay.
Which would be, the Saturday would be November twenty-fifth. That's the Saturday after Thanksgiving. What do you guys think? You guys around, you wanna do a site visit on the twenty-fifth?
It would be difficult. It would be difficult. I might have children with me.
Yeah. I was thinking myself.
What about this Saturday?
What's that?
What about this Saturday?
Yeah. How about, you wanna, you guys wanna do it this Saturday? You guys okay this Saturday?
I won't be able to do it this Saturday, on twenty-first.
Do we do it on this Saturday?
No, I can't.
No?
I'll be in New York.
All right. Well, why don't we schedule it for the twenty-fifth anyway? We'll schedule a site visit for the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
We'll be there probably around nine o'clock. So, is there, are there any ways you can mark or have a pretty good idea where your property line is?
Yeah.
You can, and mark it out, paint it, line it out, line, whatever. You know, string line, whatever would be, so we could get a good idea of what we're looking at. All right, so we'll do that on the site visit on that Saturday. And then the following Tuesday would be the twenty-eighth, right? Would be, so go schedule your public hearing for the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
All right? And B will have a sign for you to put in the yard.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. May be good, okay? So we'll see you on the twenty-third. Yeah. Right around nine. Barbara, I'm just thinking if we should or could address the miscellaneous first. The applicant, you'll be fine with that? And Ken, we're gonna, we're gonna jump to the, just a couple of miscellaneous items and then we'll jump to your application? Just get the two out of the way. You guys okay with that? Okay, so it'd be a couple minutes. All right, so we have the calendar for 2024 that we are looking to accept. I think B, the only modifications that we would like to make on the calendar for 2024 was to adopt summer meeting schedule in July and August. And we'll have one meeting in July and one in August. You guys, we'll do the second meeting in each month, does that work?
Yeah, I think we get rid of July third, right? That's right before the holiday and August sixth. Get rid of those two.
No, no, you can have a submission date.
Yes.
Oh, that submission date.
July ninth. It would be July ninth and August thirteenth.
That'll be the first meeting of-
We're getting rid of the two first meetings.
We're gonna get rid of them.
So we'll-
If that's okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, we'll omit the meeting on the ninth and omit the meeting on the thirteenth of August. And then, and then I think we're good with the rest of the schedule, right?
And just for the record, if we're very busy next summer and you want to add one, we can always add a meeting back in.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we need motion. All right, you have a motion then, please, to accept the minutes, I'm sorry, not the minutes, the meeting, 2024 meeting schedule as amended?
Yes.
Give the motion. Can we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. And next item under miscellaneous, just an FYI for the general public, is we've agreed with the applicants to move our decision to December twelfth meeting. So we will not be addressing any Alpine Commons issues tonight. Okay, that's miscellaneous then, right?
That's it.
That's it. All right. Next up. Appeal number twenty-one, seven-seven forty, Gasland Petroleum, Route nine D, Hughesville. Decision on the remand from Supreme Court to revisit the ZBA's determination on convenient items. The property is located at two-three-five-seven, two through two-three-six-five, Route nine D, in an HM zoning district and is identified as tax grid numbers in the town of Wappinger. So... All right, so, so we, you know, all the parties, you know, came before since September and we heard all arguments from, or presentations from all parties. We reviewed all the submissions. We've had discussions of the matter. And we've received a draft DNO, which we've all reviewed. And we are prepared to read it and make a decision tonight. I am going to read through the DNO. And if I need a break and then need somebody else to jump in, I'll do that. Now, Barbara, all the information up on top, I need to read all that as well?
No, you could start with them. That's all just housekeeping.
Okay. So here's a resolution offered by Pecali zoning board. Whereas the town of Wappinger planning board granted approval to Gasland Petroleum, Inc. for preliminary and final subdivision plat approval, site plan development approval, special permit approvals, and a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act seeker for the development of a one point seven-nine acre site with gas land filling station, three thousand six hundred and thirty square feet convenience store, and three one-bedroom apartments in one seven thousand two hundred and sixty square foot mixed-use building, thirty-two parking spaces and other side improvements such as new septic infrastructure, new water infrastructure, and road and sidewalk improvements to project and its meeting held on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas, the planning board determined that the project complied with all applicable special permit standards in section two forty, forty-four of the town code, section two forty fifty-two of the town code for gas land filling stations, and section two forty dash eighty-one point seven of the town code for mixed uses. And whereas, the attorneys of the applicants in the present matter before the ZBA, Stinger Diamond and Glass, LLP, the Stinger Law Firm, represented the same applicants in the proceeding before the planning board opposing the project. And whereas, the planning board approval, the Stinger Law Firm commenced an Article seventy-eight proceeding against the town of Wappinger, index number twenty twenty-one, excuse me, five-three-six-nine-eight, seeking to overturn the planning board's approval. Whereas, the project in the planning board process, the Stinger Law Firm sent a letter dated December seventh, twenty twenty, to the town of Wappinger Board, Planning Board, advising the Board of its opinion that the project required a use variance in order to proceed. And whereas, the Stinger Law Firm submitted a letter dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to Barbara Roberti, Director of Planning Municipal Codes, formally requesting an interpretation of town zoning code with respect to the enumerated matters in the letter. And whereas, as part of its representation of the applicants in the present matter, the Stinger Law Firm submitted a letter dated June one, twenty twenty-one to Thomas F. Wood Esquire, who is advising the zoning board of appeals in the present matter due to the refusal of the ZBA's attorney, James Heran Esquire. And whereas, the June first letter to Wood stated in part that the planning board cannot address the application before it until the substantive issues required by the request for the interpretations has been resolved. And whereas, the Stinger Law Firm also submitted a letter dated June one, twenty twenty-one to the chairman of the town of Wappinger's planning board, Bruce Flowers, alerting the planning board chairman that the firm has filed a request with the town of Wappinger zoning administrator to provide it to an interpretation of two portions of the town zoning code, which are implicated by this application. And whereas, Barbara Roberti, Director of Planning and Municipal Codes, issued a memorandum dated June thirtieth, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, which concluded that proposed use is allowed by special permit in the HM District twenty, twenty forty, I'm sorry, two forty dash fifty-two. Special, the same special permit allows dwelling units above commercial ground floor uses. Section two forty dash twenty-one dot D of the town of the Wappinger law allows the planning board to grant the exception in the front yard. No variance is required in the rear yard as the building is more than fifty feet away from the rear yard. The application referred to me as the zoning administrator on January ninth, twenty twenty, was allowed to proceed since it was in compliance with the town code should the special use permit be granted by the planning board. Whereas, the Director of Planning Municipal Codes was the proper town employee to issue the memorandum pursuant to section two forty dash one oh six of the town code. And whereas, on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, the Stinger Law Firm submitted the present appeal to the ZBA for an interpretation of the following town code provisions. Section two forty fifty-two C, two forty twenty-one D, two forty fifteen, and the non-residential schedule definition of mixed uses. And whereas, pursuant to a package with a cover letter dated November one, twenty twenty-one, and received by the town on November third, twenty twenty-one, the Stinger Law Firm submitted a memorandum of law and accompanying documents arguing that Mrs. Roberti, Ms. Roberti's interpretation was erroneous.
Pete, I've just been asked, can you just talk more into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
It's not carrying into the body, sure.
Okay. Let me start, I'll start there again. Whereas, pursuant to-
Start at the beginning, Pete.
Yeah, no, thanks. Sorry, gang. Whereas, pursuant to a letter dated November one, twenty twenty-one, attorneys for Gasland, Keenan Bean, argued that the applicants did not have standing. The request by the applicants for an interpretation from the ZBA was moot. And in the alternative, the conclusion in Ms. Roberti's memorandum should be upheld as they are supported by the town code. Whereas, the ZBA held a public hearing at its April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting, the public hearing, after having this matter on discussion at the ZBA September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and November twenty, I'm sorry, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one meetings. And whereas, the public hearing, the Stinger Law Firm opinioned that Gasland needed a use variance as it argued Gasland would be operating a grocery store at the property. And whereas, Keenan Bean provided counterarguments to the Stinger Law Firm's arguments at the public hearing. And whereas, Keenan Bean provided a response letter dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas, the Stinger Law Firm submitted a letter to the ZBA dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two in response to a submitted from Keenan Bean dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas, the ZBA has the power to review interpretations of the Director of Planning and Municipal Codes to section two-six-seven B one and two-six-seven A four of New York State Town Law and section two forty-one oh seven B two A of the town code. Whereas, the zoning board of appeals met in executive session in May twenty, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two with its counsel to further review the file and deliberate. And whereas, at its June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting, the ZBA voted to uphold the memorandum dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, written by Barbara Roberti. Whereas thereafter, Ronald M. Evangelista, Franka Patrillo, and two-three-three-seven Route nine D LLC sued the ZBA pursuant to index number two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, five-two-five-zero-two, seeking to overturn the ZBA's interpretation. And whereas, pursuant to the decision and order dated August ninth, twenty twenty-three by the Honorable Michael G. Hayes, the matter was remanded to the ZBA for an expanded determination on the following two issues. Does the project comply with codes- Does the project comply with Code's retail sale of convenience items limitations? And two, is the convenience store an incidental and subordinate accessory use? And whereas, the ZBA accepted respondents from the attorneys for the parties involved. And whereas, the matter was heard at the ZBA September 26, 2023 meeting. And whereas, this interpretation is a type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACER, pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C37, with no further review pursuant to SEACER required at this time. Now, therefore be it resolved that the decision and order of the zoning board of appeals is as follows. Okay. Does the project comply with the Code's retail sale of convenience items limitation? A, the petitioner's argument. Petitioners argued that the ZBA should refer to more comprehensively drafted codes in nearby locales for guidance and support on how to interpret these undefined terms and how to best contextualize them. Petitioners specifically cite the town of La Grange's code and the town of Wappinger's code's definition of fast food establishment, and argued that if you expand your interpretation of convenience items too much, it drives precariously close to the definition of a restaurant, which is fundamentally different and more intensive use. Petitioners argued that providing, uh, providing may to order food as an option is a restaurant use. Respondents' argument. Respondents argued that the town code does not define the terms of convenience item or convenience store, so the ZBA should use general principles of statutory construction. The respondent used definitions from the United States Department of Agriculture and the National Association of Convenience Stores to argue that the client's operation complies with the town code's limitation for the retail sale of convenience items. In addition, the respondents argued that there would be one point of sale at the proposed convenience store for both gas customers and convenience store customers. Importantly, the respondents took pictures and inventoried items located in other convenience stores that are already operating in town in appendix C of its submittal to the ZBA. Section 24, 240 dash 4 of the Wappinger town code provides rules for the general construction of language. Section 240 dash 4Q states that where terms are not defined, they shall have their ordinary accepted meanings or such as the context may imply. It is disputed that the town code lacks a definition, I'm sorry, it is undisputed that the town code lacks a definition for retail sale of convenience items. The ZBA concludes that the items are based on public demand, providing flexibility to the respondent. The respondent's pictures and list of items located in convenience stores is instructive and helps to shed light on how convenience stores operate throughout the town in light of the town code lacking a definition of retail sale of convenience items. The store's inventory in appendix C have similar items to the respondent's proposed convenience store pursuant to its list on page nine of its submittal. When issuing its prior decision and order, the ZBA members used their own experience as to what convenience items are as the term was undefined by the town code. As stated by the judge in his decision, this decision and order should not be interpreted as directing the ZBA to conduct a line-by-line self, shelf-by-shelf inventory of each retail item that might be offered for sale as a convenience item. Therefore, it finds the current practice of similarly situated stores in the town to be a strong evidence of which convenience items have historically been permitted to be sold in the town based on the town's code as opposed to definitions from neighboring municipalities or outside agencies, I'm sorry, outside agencies without jurisdiction over the town. It does not find the proposed use to be a restaurant use. Restaurant is defined pursuant to section 240 dash 5 of the town code as follows. An establishment which prepares and serves foods and beverages selected by patrons from a menu or at a buffet and consumed on the premises, and which contains permanent seating facilities and counters or tables adequate to accommodate the customers served. A restaurant may include the serving of alcoholic beverages if licensed by the state liquor authority and may provide for carryout food service if incidental to the consumption of food and beverages on the premises. Specifically excluded from the term restaurant and standalone franchise fast food establish, establishments, carryout food service establishments, delicatessens, refreshment stands, and curb service, or drive-in type food establishments. A restaurant may include any accessory entertainment use. The description of the proposed operation provided by respondent did not indicate that the food would be consumed at the, at the premises, or that there would be permanent seating facilities. Based on all of these factors, the ZBA finds that the project complies with the Code's retail sale of convenience items limitation in the convenience store and incidental, yeah, is the convenience store an incidental and subordinate accessory use. Petitioners argued that the respondent's proposal includes an enormous convenience store, and that both the gasoline filling station and the convenience store are both principal uses, and thus both cannot be permitted. In addition, petitioners argued that the board needs to take into account the revenue, the sale, the revenue, the sales from the proposed convenience store when determining whether it is in, whether it is an accessory use or primary use. Respondents' argument. Respondents' argument argued that the primary advertisements from the road, from the road and point-of-sale systems are directed towards the gas pump users. In addition, it argues the ratio of parking spaces provided is similar to other gas stations located in the town of Wappinger with accessory convenience stores. Analysis. Section 240 dash 5 of the town of Wappinger code defines principal use as the main or primary use of land, water, or a building structure or a lot, and it defines accessory use as a use which is, excuse me, customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use on a lot, and which is located on the same lot or water area therewith. It is important to note that four pumps and eight fueling stations are approved, were approved by the planning board, which the ZBA believes will be the primary driver of the customers to the site. The parking spaces are determined by all uses on-site, primary and accessory, by using the requirements of the town code and guidance from professional organizations such as the Institute of Transportation Engineers. In addition, approximately 10% of the proposed convenience store space is not usable for convenience items, as it consists of a utility room and stairs for the proposed apartments. There is also significant areas of cold storage. This decreases the usable area of the proposed convenience store for commercial transactions, which weakens the petitioner's argument that the size of the convenience store should be evidence that it is a primary use. Thus, the ZBA concludes that the convenience store is an incidental and subordinate accessory use. Conclusion. Based on all of these factors, the ZBA upholds the memorandum dated June 30th, 2021, written by Barbara Roberti, and specifically concludes that the project complies with the Code's retail sale of convenience items limitation, and the convenience store is an incidental and subordinate accessory use as previously determined. Be it further resolved, that within five business days, the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant slash owner. To that, at this point, Barbara, I would just ask for a second.
Mm-hmm.
All right, do I have a second, please?
One second.
All right, can I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Dower, quarter?
Yes. Is it my, my voting yes that I agree? Is that how it is? Okay, yes, I agree.
Mr. Lawrence, in?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes. Okay, so the board then has agreed to uphold Ms. Roberti's interpretation. That did really conclude this matter.
Yes, and this will be filed with the town clerk this week.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have me down as a vice chair here? I don't, not you, but it's written out on vice chair. John is vice chair.
All set? All set.
Good night.
All right, so, that being said, I believe we've covered all the items on tonight's agenda.
Yes.
Do I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved, we are adjourned.